Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us today for our work session, Monday, August 11th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. It's four, it's time's wrong here. Now call the meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please? And I know that Dr. McGee will not be with us today. She's on, she's boarded a plane coming home from Cabo.
Counselor Van Dremelin?
Present.
Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Present.
Here.
Present. Next on tonight's agenda is public comment. Public comment is a time for Albany residents to speak and for counselors to listen. The council won't discuss topics or make decisions during public comment, but will take comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council's rules and observe the same standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they'll be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the remainder of the meeting. When, when you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the city of Albany. Since no one signed up, does anyone in chambers would like to address the council today? Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is street, I was going to change it, but she actually made it to the meeting. Number three is street maintenance fee development. Rob Emmons and Deb Galardi Group, pages three through forty-four, your packet.
Share your screen. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to give a moderately paced introduction, so Deb has time to share her screen. So, for those who don't know me, I'm Chris Bailey, I'm Public Works Director, and I'm joined up here today by Deb Galardi, Galardi Rothstein Group, who is doing the majority of the heavy lifting on developing a street maintenance fee structure. So as a little bit of background on how we got here, if you will remember, last year, well, we started this two years ago, in August of 2023, discussing the need for a local funding source for our streets and pavement condition concerns. Last year, the council discussed the two local funding mechanisms that they had settled on and directed staff to continue working on both of those. So we've been working on both a local fuel tax and a street maintenance fee that would appear as a monthly utility charge. Both of those local funding choices are very common in Oregon. There are over fifty cities and counties that have either one of those mechanisms in place to supplement the street funding that we all receive from generally the, the other same sources, primarily state and federal gas taxes. So Deb and her team has been working on the street maintenance fee structure, and there, she's going to present, actually, they're pretty far along. In other words, almost done with the street maintenance fee structure, and at the point where she and her team needs some input from you on policy decisions. So as she goes through her presentation, she's going to point out where they have made assumptions for policy changes to enact just a straight fee, and it'll be important for you to pay attention and decide, discuss and decide if you like those options, or if you would like to see something different. And those will be pointed out as we go. At the end of the presentation, I'm going to ask you for your direction on the street maintenance fee and some of the things that Deb has presented. The other thing I want to mention is the dollar amount. You're going to see dollar amounts for different classes of customers, and these are illustrative only, and I'm going to say that, and know that you're going to hang on to them, because that's what we do. We hang on to numbers that we see. The way we come up with these numbers is, in order for Deb to do her work, she has to know, how much money are we trying to get? And if you'll remember, our actual funding gap for street condition is $12.3 million per year for forty years, which is a very large number. And we had discussed with council last year that a more reasonable number that might let us get a moderate amount of work done is $6 million per year. So what she's going to present to you is based on a $6 million per year revenue target. If in the end, the council decides that, you can decide a lot of things. You can decide you want zero dollars to come from a street maintenance fee, and that's fine. You can decide one, two, three, five, six, twelve, one hundred and thirty-two, whatever your number is, and the fee itself can be just adjusted based on our actual revenue target. Okay, so $6 million is our target, but it doesn't really mean anything, and it is not being implemented, for those who are concerned that this is going to show up on a bill, it is not. It would have to be implemented through another council action via a rate resolution. Okay, with that introduction, I'll let Deb take it from here.
Thanks, Chris. So just to revisit what our work plan is as part of this process and where we are, when I was before you last, we were talking about just some of the, the case study research, what we found, and how other cities implemented these fees and what their rate structures look like. This, as Chris said, we've been busy working on the technical analysis to develop some actual rate options for you, and most importantly, to illustrate these structures and some of the policy decisions, and how shifting some of the costs to one group or another, how that might impact the rates for different user classes. And so I'll walk through that, and I'll show you how those very preliminary fees, based on this conceptual revenue target, how that compares with the, the same other cities we collected information from in the first phase. If you should go forward with this, then there, then you would go into an implementation phase and the resolution and policies and procedures. Just to frame this for folks, you know, while this is a new fee that you're considering, conceptually, this is not a new fee, both in terms of nationally and in Oregon, this is a very common fee to raise money for street maintenance. And in fact, the framework for the fee is basically the same as any of your other utility fees. And so I'll draw some comparisons, most relevantly, I think, to the wastewater rates and the wastewater rate structure, and how you, how you allocate costs to different customer classes based on their impact on the system. So, the, the transportation utility fees were, are put in place to address these funding gaps in an equitable manner, basically in proportion to system use. And so the process is the same as, as water or wastewater, where we, we look at customers and their impacts, and we group them into what we call rate classes, and then we allocate the cost, whether it's six million, three million, whatever it turns out to be, to those customer classes in proportion to their estimated impact, which in the case of a street maintenance fee, is trip generation. Then the rates are designed for each class to recover the allocated costs, and while it's a very technical process, there's plenty of opportunity for policy direction and choices. And so we'll, we'll try to identify some of those for you tonight. So, this idea of estimating trip generation is, is new to many people. It's unlike water and wastewater systems, where we have metered water use for an individual customer. We have to make estimated, we, we estimate the impacts of the different customer types based on trip generation data that is available and published nationally. The Institute of Transportation Engineers is on the eleventh edition, edition currently of the Trip Generation Manual. I understand the twelfth edition is going to be coming out soon. So this is a well-respected, well-utilized manual for estimating trip impacts of different land use types, some of which are listed in this table to illustrate the fact that the trip rates vary based on the, the type of use, and for commercial, there's a lot of variability based on the particular business enterprise. For different types of residential, the, as you get more dense housing, the trip rate tends to go down because of lower occupancy. The trip rates, which are the number of trips generated per unit, and so for, for residential, it's per dwelling unit, for commercial industrial, most uses are measured in terms of their square footage. So it's a rate per square, for, per thousand square feet. And you can see the lower trip rates for single unit attached, which is typically townhomes and multi-unit. So as you go up in density, you go down in your trip rate. For commercial industrial, medical dental office is kind of a moderate impact supermarket, more intensive use per thousand square feet. And then some types of uses, square feet doesn't work so well. We have to go to special units, like the number of gas station fueling positions, or school students, things like that. The Trip Generation Manual helps to do that, and is the most utilized resource for setting these fees, as well as systems development charges. So you use this in your other fee setting as well. In determining a customer category framework, we start with how, what the billing system, the current billing system, how you categorize customers, which is fairly broad groups of residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera. As I said, within the non-residential class, there's quite a bit of variability, and in terms of the intensity of use. So staff have done a lot of work to further identify the business type for all of those non-residential class customers. And then, again, because it's not water or sewer, and we're not looking at water use, we're looking at trip generation rates, which as I said, in most cases are based on square footage, we have to establish what the square footage is for different customer accounts. So that work has been done, as well as research on special units, number of school students, et cetera. And so then we, then that information comes to me, and we start working on determining the, the categories. And so, this is one of the policies, many policy choices of just how to balance the administrative complexity and requirements of a very, you know, complex system with the cost of service or equity of the rates, in terms of how many different customer classes to have. The more classes you have, the more monitoring that has to happen, because if a use changes, and there's, you know, oftentimes tenant improvements, something that was a, a retail store is now a restaurant, or something like that. All of those kinds of, and, and with, within, like industrial flex space and things, you can have a lot of changing out of uses. So if you have a very disaggregated classification system, that's a lot more monitoring that has to happen to make sure that if a use changes, that it gets in the right category. And we have to have information to make sure that those are categorized. There's also an affordability question, that as, as you introduce more and more categories, the range of trip rates is much broader. So you might have a much lower low and a higher high. And so when you're introducing a new fee like this, that is something to consider as well. As I mentioned, well, first I'll say that Chris and I both appreciate a good spreadsheet and analytics, and there's a big spreadsheet behind producing this type of information. So, what this, this data shows is, on the, the bottom axis, the horizontal axis, you've got the trip rate, which correlates to a typical use. So, the big, the biggest blue bar, that's your industrial square footage, which at the bottom, it shows that, that the average trip rate of an industrial, manufacturing, light industrial customer is 4.8 trips per thousand square feet. So that's what that big blue bar is. And then you can see there's other kind of clumps as we move forward, move into higher trip generation. We've got this second category that's dominated by general office, hospital utilities. Then we start getting into the retail, and you start with kind of low-impact retail, auto care, and then you move over to medical offices, which have a higher intensity generally of trip generation per thousand square feet than general office. So there tend to be categorized separately. Strip retail, auto sales, and then you get to more your fast food, convenience, higher turnover kind of uses. So where to draw the line is always the question. We, when we did the research on the case studies, and my experience in other communities, is generally we see four to seven types of, you know, number of bins, that that's generally deemed to be a, a good balance between administrative and cost of service kind of considerations. Here, I'll draw comparison back to your wastewater rates. When we set up the wastewater rate structure decades ago, we went through a similar exercise, where each commercial customer was, you know, they estimated the type of use, so that we could put them into a strength, wastewater strength category. And so, you know, in, in wastewater, it's not just your flow, but also the concentration of your wastewater that is an indicator of cost. And so this is a similar process. Instead of wastewater concentration, we're talking about trip generation. And so for that system, you have three categories, high, medium, and low strength, I think, right? Three. And so here, there's a broader range, I think, of, of trip generation, and because many communities have, as I said, four to seven, for this preliminary structure, we're bringing to you six different categories of non-residential rates. And that is, that can be changed, as well as some of these other elements. So that's on the commercial side. On the residential side, one of the considerations is whether or not to, for the single unit customers, which is the majority of your customer counts, whether to charge a uniform rate, or go back to the information that we developed as part of the Systems Development Charge Study, that determined the trip rate by size of unit. And so that, we, we've developed the preliminary rate structure using that same tiering structure. That has four tiers, and you can see the square footage ranges in the table here, the second column. Most, so tier three is where your average residential is, and based on the distribution of accounts that we evaluated in 2022, that was eighty-two percent of the customers. The tier one and two then would give kind of a discounted rate off that average, and tier four would charge more, because the trip generation of an over 3,000 square foot house is generally going to be higher than a average house, because you have greater number of occupants. So, we have designed the preliminary rates on that basis for a single unit, and then we have different classes for multi-unit, single attached with again, which again is, tends to be kind of middle housing, townhome, kind of attached units versus the higher density, five units and above of what I would call multi-unit, and manufactured homes in parks. Another policy question will be low-income discounts. We've, using information that's available from your current program, we have estimated what a low-income rate might be under the transportation, or the, the street maintenance fee. To get to rates, we have to, and again, talking about the $6 million revenue target for illustration, we have to make decisions about the cost allocations to those classes that I just described. And there's two levels of cost allocation policy question. The first is just the broad groups of residential versus non-residential. And here, we've, we're looking at, because, consistent with other cities, this can be based on just pure trip generation, or it can take into consideration other factors like the miles of local streets, which tend to be used and benefit to residential customers, tend to be, you know, higher number of lane miles than other collector or arterial type streets. Then with, in each broad category, so residential and non-residential, cost allocation within those groups, so, for example, the residential tiered changes the distribution of how costs are allocated across different sizes of dwelling units. And then, the low-income, and then for non-residential, whether or not to provide any discounts for particular land uses, or caps on the trip rates, or, or floors, too. You know, do we want to reduce the highs and, and increase the lows to kind of even things out a little more smoothly? And then exemptions for city accounts or, or others, that, the city accounts being the most common. For purposes of illustrating these rates to you tonight, we have two different scenarios. The first is that unadjusted trip rate. Under that scenario, the cost allocation to the broad groups is about forty-five percent residential, fifty-five percent non-residential, just purely looking at number of units, amount of square footage, and the estimated trip rates by customer account. We compare and contrast that with a fifty-fifty split, just to show what the impact would be to residential and non-residential of shifting five, by five percentage point, increasing the, the residential share. And again, for considerations like local street costs and things. Then for the residential adjustments, we have included the low-income discount in both scenarios. For, within the non-residential class, we have included in scenario two, a fifty percent discount for K through twelve schools, and you'll see why we're showing that in comparison to other communities when I show you some of the numbers. We've also used kind of a floor-ceiling approach to mitigate some of the increases, or impacts that would be on the highest trip generators, and establish kind of a floor for the lowest trip generation. So, getting into the numbers now, and I'm going to show you a lot of numbers, because we've got these two scenarios, and there are a lot of different customer types. So, the, I'm not going to explain every number, but just give you a sense here of some of the highlights. So, caveat remains, rates are for illustration purposes only. They are subject to change. Do not get too attached to these particular rates. This is not a specific rate proposal. Council is not being asked to adopt these rates. It's, it's purely for illustration of the classification structure and the framework. So, as I said, we could sort of look at that tier three for the single unit detached, to illustrate that under a $6 million revenue target, based on the customer data that we've analyzed to date, the monthly rate per dwelling unit would be about nine forty-three. And you, under scenario one, that's the unadjusted trip rate, that's the first column of the numbers. And the column to the right, the policy adjusted, shifts some additional costs to residential, and that rate would increase to $10.92, based on the assumptions that we made with respect to some of those cat- made with respect to some of those caps and the allocation between residential and non-residential. You can see that the low-income, again, it's 35% discount on that average rate. And understand, the tier structure, the benefit is that the smaller units would pay significantly less in the case of very smallest units in Tier One, and even the Tier Two single unit would pay similar to a single attached unit based on the estimated trip impacts. And you can see multi-unit in park, or multi-unit and manufactured home in parks, all being less than that residential average. For non-residential, these are the unit rates. So for single-family or for residential, the unit rate and the bill are the same because each is charged a unit per dwelling unit. In the case of non-residential, because they're the scaling units, either the square footage or gas station pumps or school students, we'll first talk about the rate per unit, and then I'll show you some sample bills. So this looks at the six bins that I talked about, the six subclasses within the non-residential. And so the first, or the second category or column, shows you the trip rate range and the typical uses within that class or bin. And then we've got the two sets of preliminary rates to illustrate the policy adjustment impact. So the green circles are to show you the significant impact that some of these policy adjustments have to non-residential. So for purposes of Scenario Two, the policy adjusted, we've both shifted costs away from non-residential, but we've also established a floor for Bin One at, you know, that $5 per square foot, and we've capped the trip rates for the more intense trip generators in bins four through six, most pronounced in bins five and six. And so you can see that under the unadjusted, that very, the range of rates is very significant, $3.05 at the low end to up over $100 per thousand square feet at the upper end. And adjusting those to moderate the impacts on the top brings up the rate on Bin One, I will say, is still within the range. So we've said that zero to five trips, or yeah, trips per thousand square feet. So basically, we've just set that, the rate for that bin based on the top of the range rather than a average for the bin. And so it's, instead of, you know, the wide range in Scenario One, in Scenario Two, we have $5 to $50, you know, about $60. So it cuts that in half, that range. For the special units, these are those non-residential uses that are not charged based on square footage. This just gives you, again, a look at, particularly for like elementary schools, the cost per unit based on just the unadjusted trip rate would be $2.30 per student. So we've basically cut that in half, so it's just over a dollar. And then for gas station and convenience store or car wash, because those rates would be similarly high like Bin Six for the square footage basis, we've capped those as well. So just to put that in context of other communities and give you a sense of the bills for typical customers. So this shows you a residential monthly cost per dwelling unit for the two scenarios for Albany, based on the $6 million, compared to six or seven other communities. And $9 to $10, or $9 to $11 being the estimated rate per dwelling unit. And you can see that that fits within the range, well within the range that, of these other communities, which I think are representative of a broader number of cities across the state. So kind of that, somewhere between $5 and $15 is probably the most common range. Lake Oswego has one of the highest in the states, $16.80 per dwelling unit per month. Part of, you know, obviously, the difference between these, in some cases, is population, but also it's what they're using the money for. Lake Oswego uses, and Milwaukee both use money not just for street maintenance, but for all modes of travel. So it might include sidewalks and other types of transportation infrastructure. So that's why those rates are a little on the higher end. Bend is the most recent implemented just this month, I think August 1st, those rates went into effect. And the apartment unit rates that we calculate are six to, kind of six to $8 per unit per month, which, again, well within the range and proportion, generally proportionate to the single unit as in the other communities. It gets really complicated and busy, the table gets very busy when you're looking at non-residential because there are just so many different uses. So I just picked some fairly common uses here, and really what this is to do is to highlight when we thought about some policy adjustments and where there might be a need to moderate on the upper end and establish that floor on the lower end. You can see that manufacturing and warehouse, which are both in that Bin One, were, are on the lower end of the comparison with other communities, four communities that charge kind of at the same level that we're looking at here. So most of those are $5 and above, or close to $5 and above. And in Scenario Two, the, that $5 is more consistent with what the other communities are charging as well. The upper end, my, as I said, you'd see why we were doing the 50% discount for schools. Many communities are doing some level of discount for schools. Bend in theirs, they did a 50% discount. The rationale is often, you know, that the schools are only in session for a portion of the year, so it provides some, you know, cost-based adjustment to provide some financial consideration to the K through 12 schools. So in the scenario here, the 50% discount pulls that rate back down within the range of some of these other communities. And the same thing with gas station. So while they are heavy trip generators and a cost-of-service-based rate would charge them more, there is still oftentimes a consideration of an affordability impact of implementing a new fee like this. Now, you can also phase in, there are also, you know, different implementation tactics that you can use to address affordability. But you can see that the, for the other general office, medical office, high turnover restaurant, that the, both scenarios, One and Two, those rates generally fall within that range. Medical office without the adjusted adjustments would be on the higher end, except for Milwaukee, with some consideration of setting that bin rate a little bit lower, brings it more in line with other communities. So it's very much a, it's an art in addition to the science that, backed by big spreadsheet. Though, finally, let's just show you some bills, because for the non-residential, we were just looking at the unit prices. You have to multiply the unit price by the units to get the actual bills, so this gives you a sense as to what a customer would pay per month at different assumed sizes of square feet. This is for the bins where the, it's based on square footage. So a large distribution warehouse or a large shopping center is going to have, obviously, a bill in the thousands when you're talking about a rate that's $5 per month per thousand square feet. These are based on actual profiles of customers, and so this is, these are real examples. And just to give you a sense as to what the level of magnitude of the fee for a $6 million total revenue requirement. For the special unit customers, similarly, tried to choose units of scale, number of units that represented, approximated actual customers. Schools, you can see, you know, based on the number of students, the, a big difference in the unadjusted trip rate allocation and the policy trip rate allocation in the bills there. Community college, for the preliminary numbers, we did not adjust those for, discount those in any way. Certainly, that's within the policy realm of discussion, and additional scenarios could be brought back that did provide some discount there. You can also make the argument, you know, in some community, for Bend, we did do some significant evaluation of number of hours of, you know, and who was doing school online versus, you know, in person, to try to come up with a better adjustment there. So there are certainly practices in other communities that support adjusting those down for community college as well. So yeah, this gives you a sense as to what those bills would be for some of the other special unit-type customers. And gas stations with convenience being one of the highest trip generators, and seeing what the impacts of capping the trip rate to the lower end of the range for that particular All right, to wrap up, I know that's a lot of information, but, you know, really, as I mentioned, it's a technical and a policy-based process, and there are really two kind of areas of policy decision. One is that customer categories, how many bins, where you, where you kind of draw those lines, and really weighing the complexity with the administrative requirements and the cost of service. The fewer categories lends to less administrative burden generally, and lower, or a less range of rates, so less impact on the top and raising the rates on the bottom. And the cost allocation across the broad categories and within categories of how best to balance the different trip, trip-making and impact with affordability issues for particular uses and classes. Do you want to talk about the?
Sure.
The direction?
Okay. So in order to keep going, we need input from you all, so hopefully you had some thoughts about the different policy decisions that Deb described. And so we've tried to frame those as questions here, and we can either get your input now, which would be helpful, or try to gather it at another meeting if you want to think about this some more, but these are the basic questions we have. So do you want to tier the residential rates and include a low-income discount?
Counsel, we can respond today, or we can bring back something later, that's up to you. We've all had the weekend to look at the packet.
Questions?
Smith?
I would like an explanation of the adjustments for city accounts.
That's one question.
We don't typically excuse ourselves from any of the city utility bills. So this came up with stormwater as well, and the decision was to treat the city properties the same as every other property, and so, but it is an option. You can excuse us if you would like.
Thank you. Question number two, the discounts for K to 12 schools. I understand that they're not always in session, but when they are. I participated in a data collection project some years ago for a Safe Routes to School study at Oak Elementary School, and counted parents dropping off kids at the start of school and then picking them up at the end of the school day. I've never seen so many SUVs in my life. And I, that was at the time when Oak Street was at a, probably a PCI IV. It was, has since been rebuilt substantially. It's lovely street, but Pine Street, which is the other half of the loop for parents coming to and from school, is every bit as bad as Oak was before it was reconstructed. And the folks who live on Pine Street are concerned about that, and I know that's one of our worst streets. I'm not saying, I'm not limiting my question to Oak Street and Pine Street because we have how many elementary schools in Albany, and I know that parents take their kids to school, that just happens, and that's got a significant impact. So I'm, I'm, I'm taking that into consideration when looking at these tiers. Community colleges as well, that there was a substantial monthly fee for community colleges. I'm wondering about how many, what the percentages of students who commute in their personal vehicles versus how many take transit, because we do have a substantial number of transit customers at LBCC, and so just wanted that to be considered. Thank you.
Counselor Newton?
I also noticed on Counselor Smith's last comment, the high school, I'm not sure how large the graduating class is, but I knew that a lot of the juniors and seniors drive them to school, and so it wasn't, didn't look like as large of an increase as, I would have expected it to be more closely aligned with what we would be charging at community college, just looking at that. But, and I just want to say, like, I appreciate the work that staff and our consultants have done for bringing forward a street maintenance fee proposal. I understand the urgency of finding a sustainable source. Our roads are terrible, we need to maintain them. I do agree that we need to act. That said, I still want to say I do still have concerns about this approach, and if it's the fairest and most efficient tool for Albany, a street maintenance fee charges households and businesses a flat rate regardless of how much they're actually driving, while a local gas tax would directly connect roads, road use with payment. And I just want to make sure that we're fully exploring all options, especially those that align costs more closely with actual usage before committing to any fee structures. That could be burdensome to some residences and businesses. Just wanted to throw that out there.
Follow-up question. Are you looking at this as an either-or choice?
No, I understand that there might be a combination, but I feel like it's cart before the horse, even planning on doing a roads fee before we even have any input from constituents and the rest of the city on whether they'd like to see a gas tax. Because I'm, what I'm understanding is the $6 million that we're seeing, that's our total deficit, correct?
No, that's a, that's a number that was picked that seemed reasonable.
I feel like, what was our number that we were?
$12.3 million per year.
So this will only be half of it. So I, I don't know.
We also did talk about doing a combination of a street maintenance utility fee and gas tax.
I hesitate to even implement a street maintenance fee prior to a gas tax because what I've heard from constituents is they feel like they get kind of jerked around because we have the city services fee, that's raised, it's going to continue raising, and I feel like there isn't going to be that trust if we implement a road maintenance fee, because what's to say they're like, oh, well, you're going to just pull one over me and then charge me X so much more. You know what I mean?
So I get that, but I don't think we're doing, we're not setting it today.
I know we aren't setting it today. I just still wanted to say, I'm still extremely hesitant and think that we should be not focusing on this as much as we should be moving forward with making plans for a gas tax. And then maybe once we see what the revenue is, like a six-month trajectory with the gas tax, then start up additional conversations in regards to a street maintenance fee. It just feels like a way to get more input from constituents and then have a more solid -- and then have a, a more solid calculation of how much we would need if there is a need for additional funding by way of a street maintenance fee.
So, Mayor, can I respond?
Please.
So, this, we, we kept going with this work because we had started. And it's, it's hard work to pick up and drop and pick up again. This structure, once you're happy with it, can be boxed up nicely and put on a shelf. And as long as the community doesn't change very much, which it wouldn't in a matter of a few months, it can sit there and you can decide to use it later or not. The plan is still to go forward and discuss with council the final decision on when to put a fuel tax, a local fuel tax on the ballot. And conceptually, you could wait and see what happens with the fuel tax. If it passes, at what rate it passes, and how much revenue we anticipate that would generate. And then you can decide what to do with this utility rate. I would, you know, it would be a shame to have all this work go for nothing. But if that's what the council decides, that's perfectly fine. Depending on how many iterations we come back and ask about different policies, this work needs to continue for several more months. So we're trying to be judicious with our time, keep moving forward on this, get it to a point where it can be frozen in time, and then come back and discuss with you once, once we know more about the local funding options. So that's, we, regardless, if we're going to keep going, we need answers to these questions. Otherwise, it'll stop.
I would prefer, I know it probably sounds more arduous, but I'd prefer the more bucket option where we're able to be more equitable in our application.
More than the six that were presented?
No, like what, you got the large?
Okay.
Great. The more encompassing one where we have the low-income assistance, is that?
That's part of the residential program, yeah.
I was saying, if I had to pick a poison, that'd be the poison I'd pick. Sorry, you looked really, I mean, really confused.
I'm, I'm still confused by your state. Can you, can you restate that, maybe?
Oh, I stated that if I had, like, if I had to choose one, if we had to choose something and put it in a box to make, to have something for future, if there was a poison to choose, I'd rather choose the more equitable version. Where we have more buckets, I think is what the term was used.
So more buckets than they are, than they presented?
No, the current, current buckets. Sorry, of the options of more buckets or less buckets, make it easier or make it more complex.
Your good was six.
Yes, all the buckets.
Okay. I, I, sorry, my brain was hanging up on the word more there.
Yeah. No, sorry.
More than what was presented.
Okay, residential tiers, everyone?
I, I think, from, in my opinion, the forest.
Yeah, that seems, they're already established.
They're tiered, yeah, they're tiered.
And then the other question is really, do you want the just base facts, just the facts approach of the way it works out? Is it the costs are allocated roughly 45% on the residential customers and 55% on non-residential? Or did you prefer the scenario where we shifted that a little bit more to the residential side and, well, I'll stop there. So that the residential customers bore a little bit more of the burden, the overall burden, and it was split 50-50 between residential and non-residential customers? Or would you prefer residential customers pay even more?
Counselor, Counselor Smith had a question or comment?
The bulk of this conversation from the start has been residential streets. They're, they're the ones that have been neglected more than others that we've given attention to because the other ones bear the brunt of the traffic. But residential streets are bearing their own brunt and that increases daily. I'd like to, I like the 50-50 split because some of the traffic on, I think a substantial amount of traffic on residential streets comes from commercial sources. Amazon, Domino's, US Postal Service, Republic Services. You name it, they're there every day or every week. So, that has an effect on residential streets. And nothing has been able to happen in a systematic way for a long time.
I, I like the policy-adjusted scenario that you've put together. Partly, so everything that Counselor Smith said makes a lot of sense to me, and I want to echo that. But also, the fact that there's not kind of those big swings in rates. I think that that, you know, feels better in terms of how, how we put this out to the community, where, where we don't have, and, and again, it's the, the units based on which those rates are multiplied, then, like, that varies widely across the different categories. But when we don't have this, you know, like, three to, you know, over $100 rate swing per unit, I think that that's, I think that that's easier to explain to people. And I think that that will go over better with the community as well. So I, I like the policy-adjusted scenario.
Okay.
Counselor McLeod, Counselor?
Yeah, thank you. Our residents are clear, they don't like fees and they don't like taxes either. I share those concerns with them and that's why I'm uncomfortable moving forward with any new fee without first hearing directly from the people that it would impact. We all agree that our streets need urgent attention, but we also need to be thoughtful about how we fund these repairs with a gas tax already expected on the ballot. I'm hesitant to introduce an additional financial burden at this time. However, should we move forward with, with this, with this fee, I, I do want to see the, the low-income residents paying less with, with the, the larger number of, of bins and the structure within the bins. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, no, I want to echo Counselor Ben Jimlin's comments on the benefit towards having a less swing and as we explain it to folks. So, I would go that route. And, and what Counselor Smith said about the, the effect of commercial driving on residential areas, making it a 50-50 split. Agreed, agreed.
Okay, we are missing one voice tonight. She's on, she's on a plane coming back. So I imagine we'll be having her conversation, her input on Wednesday night. She'll be back for that.
The last thing I'll just ask about is schools. Unless there's an objection, we'll continue with the adjusted rate for schools. And we'll go do some research on the community college and maybe the high school to see how that pans out. And since we'll need to do that, we'll probably come back maybe in the early winter months and get some research on those things and be back to talk to you about this again before the end of the year. That sounds reasonable. I'm looking at Deb because she has to do the work. Does that summarize your direction? Okay, thank you for your time. I know it was a long presentation, but it's really important. And we'll be back later this year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, item four, oh, thank you, Deb, for coming today. Number four, discussion of housing implementation policy, proposals, housing, housing construction excise tax and the low-income rental housing property tax exemption. And Catlin, pages 45 through 80 in your packet.
Thank you, Mayor and counselors. Let me get my slide back. So, we are here tonight before items that are in your council packet for Wednesday because you, some of you were not on council back in December when some of these items had a first reading of an ordinance. So we, in the memo for today's meeting, we wanted to walk through what these items are, but also there are some considerations that you may have about them. So, just to recap, we did a lot of work with the Housing Affordability Task Force, which made recommendations for a variety of code amendments and policy recommendations for the council's consideration that were in the Housing Implementation Plan. And we've just been working on adopting and bringing those forward. And so, previously, the council provided some direction to move forward with these two tools, housing construction excise tax and the low-income rental housing tax exemption. So that is what we are talking about today and also just giving you a recap and, and things to think about for Wednesday. So, the housing construction excise tax, this is in state law. It was added back in 2016, I believe, that allows a one-time tax on new construction that adds living space. And that's either residential living space or occupiable commercial space. So that does not mean an accessory building on somebody's property that doesn't have living space. State law has, specifies different rates for residential and commercial. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Rates can be set and modified at any time. They could be scaled for implementation. These are things to think about, and we'll go over those in just a few minutes. And why was this recommended as a tool? Primarily because Albany does not have a revenue source to incentivize the kinds of housing types that are needed. And there's a variety of those. There's housing that's affordable to our low-income households, but there's also accessible housing, et cetera. So, many grant opportunities at the state and, and other levels really require or strongly need some local support and leverage. So that is why, especially for the long-term affordable housing for our lowest-income residents. So, how would the CET be used? State law has very specific requirements. That said, you'll see some blue stars. And in the box, there is some flexibility at the local level to determine more specifically what would be needed. I'll talk about that in just a minute. So, half of the residential CET must be for developer incentives for housing. So the city could determine what that is. We often have developers ask us, well, do you have any exemptions from CDC, SEC fees? So, that kind of thing. Then 35% must be for affordable housing programs. Again, that's as defined by the city. So that, of course, we have the greatest need for the lowest-income residents, but you may find that there is a need to support households with incomes between 80 and 120%, the workforce housing. And then 15% supports homebuyer programs for households up to 100% of area median income. It goes to the state, but then it comes back to us through programs that provide those down payment assistance programs. So then the non-residential, what we're calling the commercial CET, which would apply to commercial and industrial development, 50% must be used for housing program. Again, as defined by you, the city. And then 50% is unrestricted. Of course, there are a lot of housing needs, housing is expensive, there's a lot of infrastructure costs, as you know. Roads, water and sewer can be very expensive and, and they are missing in some areas of the community, large, large projects with large costs. So we would recommend that they, that the funds continue to, to support needs associated with housing. So, one of the, back last year and, and working up towards the ordinance development, there was a recommendation that you consider using the Community Development Commission to identify through data that we already have about the housing types and needs and programs and then work with you to determine what those final housing programs and needs would be. And if you decide to adopt the CET, it'll take a while to build up any revenue that would then go out into the community. So we have time to flesh out the details of the kinds of incentives that you might offer to the development community or for certain types of needed housing. So, some considerations, this content was in, in your memo and also in the work that we did when we analyzed the different tools available to you. So, the amount of revenue that we might bring in, the city might bring in, of course, is tied to the different rates that are set. And so you can see that there's a range from maybe around $185,000 if you did a quarter percent, up to around $800,000 if you did 1% for residential and 1.5% for commercial. Now, back with prior council, there was direction to move forward with a 1% rate for residential and 1.5% for council. And, I'm sorry, I've got this on the next slide. So, we, you can modify these rates. The council didn't adopt a resolution. So the first step would be if you move forward the CET, you would do a second reading of the ordinance. And then there is an associated resolution, which has blanks in it in your council packet, for what rate do you want to move forward with. The initial direction and what was in the December 2024 packet was to move forward with a 1% rate. And let me just explain what that rate is. It's on the value of the improvements that are calculated at the building permit stage. It's not your sales price, it doesn't include the land. If you've got an addition onto a building, it's only the addition. And there are state formulas that determine what that value is. So, most cities have a 1% rate for both residential and commercial. Carvalis has a 1.5% rate for their commercial. So, you can discuss this when I'm done. We, again, left blanks in the resolution for you to, whoever, if, if this moves forward, makes a motion to make a suggestion for rates. Or if, if there's some consensus today, we could bring back a more, a refined resolution for your, for consideration on Wednesday. One city, Eugene, and I think another, phase rates over time, they just did incremental rate increases. So that's something that could be done and we would want to add that language to the resolution. And then some cities, you, you could consider adopting a residential CET on a different date than on the commercial CET. So, when we brought this forward to you in December, we had recommend you consider a three-month-ish time period so that we could let the development community know that when they come to get their building permits, there will be this, it's basically a fee that's paid when you get your building permits. So these are some of the considerations, again, outlined in the memo and we can talk about them, but I just get through the rest here. So, another consideration, and this may affect rates that you, again, if you move forward with this, that you would consider. ORS already has a lot of exemptions. We can't do anything about those exemptions, but they are listed there. Essentially, public, public buildings and uses, school, including schools, nonprofit facilities, affordable housing, agricultural buildings, religious facilities and hospitals. So, when we were working with the council and work sessions, we came up with a suggestion to have an exemption that is Albany-specific to exempt the first $50,000 of construction value of the improvement, which essentially is providing a discount to the rate from the get-go. So that isn't, is there. Now, if you decide to move forward and consider a lower rate, let's just say you decide to go with a half percent, 0.5%, you may or may not want to still consider this exemption. So, it's something to think about and we would need to modify the ordinance language if, if that's the case. And there are also other potential exemptions you may want to consider, and these are examples from other cities. So, other cities do exempt properties that receive the MPT. Now, we don't have that program in place. It's something that, when that is in place, you can amend the language in the municipal code to add this or you can plan ahead and, and do that now. That's the multiple of property, unit, property tax exemption. It's that the economic development team has been working on. And other cities, some consider exempting the workforce housing. So, again, these are things to consider. So the other ordinance that was read for the first time back in December was a low-income rental housing tax exemption program. So this is a, a set 20-year exemption and it's regular. So this is a set 20-year exemption, and it's regulated affordable housing. So there are covenants that keep this long-term affordable housing. And this tool is available to both nonprofit and for-profit builders. And this does not require other taxing jurisdictions to participate. So, but if they want to adopt it, then those taxing jurisdictions could also allow for that exemption. So the housing must be affordable to households earning 60% of the area median income. That's in the first year. If there is a certain type of federal funding, then it's 80%. But this is your long-term affordable housing. Usually, they are receiving money from the state or federal sources, and we're talking affordability periods of probably 60 years or more. But, you know, we would just require the 20-year because we would only be involved, the city would only be involved for 20 years if you decided to move forward with it. Now, since December, you heard about another tax tool, and so I'll talk about that on the next slide. So you may want to consider this because different builders in situations are all different, different incentives are needed and offset different costs and make projects pencil. So in this situation, the value of that tax exemption has to be passed down to renters in the form of lower rent. So that is part of what would be demonstrated in an application. So the way it would work is property developers would apply, and then it would come to council for review and evaluation, and you would decide whether or not to allow the exemption. It's a defined period of lost revenue. We currently have a program that is a similar tax exemption program for low-income housing, but it's restricted to nonprofit housing. And it's supposed to sunset in 2027, and it's possible that it actually will sunset in 2027, since there is this second program that, the one that you did the first reading on. But it's not available to all builders of affordable housing. And it does require annual renewal. So in February every year, we usually bring forward a request for renewal on property zone by the Albany Partnership. So I mentioned the MUPD. Other tools that are out there that hopefully will come to fruition and be adopted soon. This is a 10-year tax exemption. It doesn't require housing to be affordable. Again, these tools were really designed to support that most-needed housing type in our community, and it does not require their taxing jurisdiction participation. Then the moderate income revolving loan program is the newest tool available at the state. I came to you in a work session, I think it was in April, to let you know about this tool, and you were interested in it. But it's, the state is still working on the specifics of it, and I heard they're trying to streamline the program a little bit. But it is a 10-year exemption rather than a 20-year exemption for housing, and it's for housing for those earning up to 120%. So it would include workforce and affordable housing. But it requires counties to participate. It doesn't work if the counties don't participate. So it's a full tax exemption for the county tax rate, the city tax rate, and then it would be the schools, you know, the other taxing jurisdictions. So what kind of lost revenue? This is something that we didn't talk a lot about or at all in the work sessions that we had with you leading up to the ordinance, and we should have. So here are some examples that were in your packet, and the packet also included revenues that you might bring in from bonds, but those would not be exempt. So it's only, the tax exemption would not include optional levies and bonds. So in Albany, and the first example is 40 units on two and a half acres. This is a development over in North Albany. The total 20-year estimated tax loss is about $350,000, which is about $435 per unit per year is what the city is losing. You're still receiving, you would still receive money from any bonds and levies. And then I've got these numbers up for Benton County and just the school district. But again, this is a program that they don't have to adopt, Benton County or Lynn County or GAPS or LBCC. The second unit is a newer development in East Albany. It's 147 units constructed in 2023, and the taxable amount over 20 years, the loss in property tax revenue is close to 2 million. It's $1.9 million. But when you look at the per-unit cost per year, it would be $650 per year. Now, these, this second example is market rate housing and has, has a lot of bells and whistles and all that, but the first one is actually affordable housing development. You'll notice there's a little bit less cost per unit per year. So again, lost tax revenue, you may or may not feel the same about these programs as you did in December. The example we had in your packet back then was the actual lost taxes collected from the Albany Partnership properties, which is currently receiving, you know, an annual renewal of their tax exemption status. And it's about $35,000 per year for four or five properties. It's 96 units. So I can go back through the slides. So what we'd like from you tonight is, well, we want to make sure we answer any questions about these programs, because Wednesday night you would just be doing a second reading and deciding whether to adopt or not adopt these programs. And then if you move forward with the construction excise tax for housing programs, you would also have a resolution. I mean, that's all in your packet. So if you'd like me to go through any of these items, I could just want to leave my presentation up and be happy to answer questions.
Counselor McLeod has some comments.
Thank you. Can you please clarify how we ensure that savings are passed on to renters?
Well, that's, that's part of, so we actually would be requiring them to provide reports annually. And they also would most likely be receiving state resources, and there is a heavy compliance department at the state level, and they monitor all of that. They check to make sure that they're doing the income verification. So some of these tools, we're really looking at combining with other funding sources, leveraging that. And the state, it really is in the compliance world, but we would be requiring them to provide reports and demonstrating that in their application, but then also annually.
Thank you.
Counselor Ron Jammer.
I have a couple of different questions. And you've actually answered some of the questions that I had coming into this after reading the packet. But I just want to get a better handle on, so it looks like under the either 1%, 1% or the 1%, 1.5% scenario, that we stand to bring in somewhere in the neighborhood of $700,000 to $800,000 annually. Is that?
It's based on past building permit history. And actually, when they did the estimates and projections, I don't think there was a potential for a $50,000 discount, but it would be somewhere in there. It's really hard to say. But again, depending on the rate, and I put the slide back up so you could see that, of course, the rate would determine what potential revenue. So we looked at five years of building permit data, so.
Yeah, so somewhere in that, that neighborhood of several hundred thousand dollars, even on the higher-end scenarios. And you say that, like, this allows us to unlock certain other funding opportunities because we then have local funds to commit to that? Because when I look at, when I look at this in a context of, like, building housing, like development, I look at this and go, $700,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money. Like, on, like, what scale are we talking about unlocking other funding on? And like, what, what could that do for Albany? Like, can you speak a little bit more to that?
Yeah, I could. So we did prepare a document, a research document, which is, is online, and I didn't include in your packet. But we did get a lot of really good information from other cities. And our neighbor, Carvallos, they have had the CET in place for a while, and they gave us data on four or five projects. And most of the awards were $400,000 or $500,000 for a project that would be leveraging six or so million dollars and, you know, 100-plus units. So it's fairly substantial. There was a small project that they did $50,000 for. It was a different funding source. So that, those are some examples, but we can come up with very small local programs such as paying for SDC fees on behalf of developers for a type of housing that we determine is most needed. And a good example might be accessible dwelling units. We know that we need more accessible housing, whether it's to help pay for elevator, which when an elevator is provided in a building, it actually triggers more units that are a type that is a little bit more accessible, for example. Or, so the council would determine what programs, but it could be a smaller amount. So depending on whether you wanted to really look at the restricting the money to saving it for big projects, or do you also want to, and we're required by law to have some incentives for developers, set aside some of those funds to pay. I mean, this is just an easy example, SDC fees for housing that we are not able to exempt because the city needs the revenue for the, those programs. Did that answer your question or enough?
Yeah, so it would be fair to say it's not just individual incentives, but it also could have a pretty big multiplier effect in terms of other funding that the city could access.
Yep.
Because we have this local.
Yep.
Commitment funding.
Yeah. And what I'll say is you did receive some examples of housing that is being built in Albany or coming to Albany from Mr. Robinson. And the Farm Workers Housing Development Corporation is an affordable housing developer. They applied for state funding, and the city didn't have any, any resources to provide them, and they didn't get it. And then the state allocated these Senate Bill 5561 funds to Albany got some, and then we were able to award some funds to them with those monies. And they also will receive some credits for building a large, or large street. That helped tip their application over to being funded. All of the developments on there, so there, there is more money for certain types of housing, like veterans' housing, Lynn Benton Housing Authority is building a veteran's, a place for homeless veterans. And then, so it's YMCA. And, but typically, they do want to see some sort of local.
Contribution.
Contribution. The other projects were, are not affordable housing, so.
And then, second question on the low-income housing tax exemption. So there's examples in, in the packet and in the presentation of individual housing developments or individual buildings, what have you, and what the revenue foregone looks like in each of those scenarios. Now, I want to clarify, for this tax exemption, would this be applicable, would be, this be something that could be applied to existing housing in the community if it meets the criteria? Or only, only newly built? Okay. So this, this would apply to a very limited number of newly constructed housing developments that meet the criteria?
Correct. They would have to apply. They would have to provide to meet those income thresholds. So all of the units are available to households earning 60% or below median income. Or if they receive this type of housing tax credit, then it's 80%. Those types of housing, usually, you know, you really need to have multiple tools in your toolbox because, you know, the cost to provide housing that is maybe half the price of a normal rental unit takes additional support.
But existing affordable housing in the community would not, okay. That, that kind of, that kind of helps round out my understanding of that. I think the rest of my question is now irrelevant. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah. So, so the, can you answer, so would awards based on this, could they go to an entity that purchased an, an older home or older apartment? I'm thinking of the Albany Partnership. I think with, with even $200,000 or $300,000, we could take on an existing building much, much easier than, than building one our own.
So I, as long as you're adding new to the inventory, that's my understanding. So.
Yeah.
You couldn't take an affordable housing complex that's already there and then apply for the program and then do the program? But if, let's just say, somebody purchases an existing complex and sort of takes over, does renovations or whatever, and it becomes new affordable housing, I believe it can apply there. I need to look through the regulations. But my understanding, it's, it would capture that as long as it's new inventory.
Okay, so that's good. That's, that's what I was hoping for, this, this tool. And I want to point out that you were kind of asking us, you highlighted the ORS asks for 50% for developer incentives, but it does not, it leaves it open as to where that could go. And I just strongly encourage putting the phrase in, having that go to affordable housing as defined, the 80% of AMI or.
Right, right.
So I'm totally supportive of that. I don't think it makes sense to talk about this separate from affordable housing.
Yeah, that's something that, yeah. I mean, in that direction, it would be great to get that now, but, for example, some cities adopted the program and then gave careful consideration about the very specific types of incentives that could be offered. And Carvallos, for example, only really targets the 80% envelope, but not all communities do. So there is some flexibility, and it can change over time. We may need accessible housing for quite some time, or a certain type of housing that, that we're not seeing being built. So there is some flexibility there. But most communities do take these funds to incentivize the most affordable housing.
Counselor McLeod has something.
Thank you. With, with the scenario that Counselor Thompson has presented, my question is if, for example, it's a 10-unit building that is already established, if that is purchased and renovated, and I can see this going two ways, either no, no new units added, but, but those 10 units renovated would this apply? And also, if, for example, two units are added to make 12 units total, would this only apply to those two units, or would this apply to all 12?
Only the, the new units, newly added units.
Only the, so it would have to be?
The newly affordable units.
Okay, so it would, it would only be the two of the 12?
I, I think I already know where you're going. So I think if they, if it's purchased at market rate and they convert it to low income, then it would apply to the whole 12. Is that correct? Is that what you're on?
Yes.
If they're all converted to affordable housing, then I think, believe that all of them would be eligible. And I can bring this, I mean, I can.
Can you bring that answer back?
Bring this answer back. It's in the, so basically, and I did want to bring this up, you would just be, if you decide to move forward this program, we're just adopting the provisions that are in state law. And I noticed that for some reason, when we copied and pasted those in, we missed a few words on page 42 of your packet for, I should have told you your packet for tonight, but Wednesday, there's number four under review of applications. We have under, and we missed ORS 307.533. I didn't bring my full printed copy, but my understanding is really just the new units that are added into the inventory, new affordable units. And so that scenario, as long as the units would be, you know, whether they're renovated or not, they all become affordable housing when they were not before, that they might be eligible for the tax rate. Again, they have to stay affordable for a very long time. And so we would really only be able to control that for the 20-year tax period. And this is another thing that. And this is another thing, the current program, we don't know if it's going to sunset. It just, every year it keeps, you know, you can, people come back or the partnership comes back. And this, it's a 20-year period where they don't have to come back and reapply. They just report to us and then we report to you that looks like they are complying with all the requirements in, in state law. And if they aren't, then well, it gets removed and they have to pay back taxes. Those are some questions that came up before.
So I, go ahead, Counselor Smith.
One question, one question, one comment. What is the fee for the school excise tax?
They're exempt.
No, they have
No, no. The CET.
The CET. The CET, schools would be exempt from the CET.
No, no. What's the rate for the current CET that goes to schools?
I don't, I don't know. Maybe somebody who was on the school board before.
Now, they did it after, after I left. It's a dollar fifty-six now.
A dollar sixty, fifty-six per?
Yeah, which is, I want to point out, to speak of the school board, the feeling was that it was stuck there. It stuck like a dollar twenty-six for a long time and the superintendent proposed a small increase. And the discussion quickly went to, let's just have it at what the legislature gives us the max amount. Because the CET for schools goes to, well, it goes to building, but you're never going to get enough to build a school. It gives you money to, to build probably modular classrooms or, or buy a bus that helps in shifting students to make the buildings, you know, fill out efficiently as possible. But anyway, just want to put that out. It was like, I could be wrong. Don't call me on this. It's like a dollar fifty-six.
Per?
And I don't know how they defined it. Was it square footage or some other, I don't?
Well, we have all the fees posted online. I just didn't have
You could find it, yeah.
I could try to look that up.
I can look it up.
Yeah.
The, the comment that I had is we've been faced with a flurry of, of requests and requirements and bills and programs related to increasing the housing supply. For as long as I've been on the city council, which isn't that long, it's just a lot of them coming from the state. I understand the need, certainly understand the need. I am, I hope that we're conscious of the potential effect of all of these exemptions compounding on one another. Maybe it doesn't add up to very much, but it does, increasing the housing supply does increase the need for public services. And public services typically are paid for by property taxes and additional fees. And if those, if so many of them are forgiven over time, it adds up to real money. So I'm just, I, I don't vote on these things with my eyes closed. I understand the need and I understand incentives unlocking other money. I'm concerned about the overall picture, so.
Yep, and we were just trying to bring forward the second reading of the ordinances and you're welcome to choose to do what you want to do. And I did bring up that Merle program, the revolving loan fund program with the state, because that could be something that you would like us to pursue instead of the low-income rental housing tax exemption, because it's also available to both for-profit and nonprofit builders of housing. So it, it would just require support from the counties. And I think we would get support from Benton County and hopefully Lynn County eventually, so.
Can you bring that back up on the screen, please? So, so I have a concern. I know that cities have, have started CET and then stopped CET. So, go ahead.
So which, there's only one city that I know of.
The Newburgh, I think it was?
Yes, and it was, it was due to something that they had in their own specific program that required a specific affordability period. So we would determine our own program. And so it didn't pencil for them the way they structured their program. All the other cities that have the CET are still doing that. So there must, there was something in there, it was, it was something about affordability period that was tied to their regulations and requirements. And we don't have that in our
And, and then, thank you for that. Thank you for the clarification. And then the other one was the LRT, I think it's called, LRT, the low-income housing. The 20 years bothers me. The 20 years bothers me. I struggle with that. I'm, I like, I kind of like what Albany Partnership does. They come back and recertify. Is that, can we change that to five years or four years?
No, that question did come up before in the work sessions last year leading up to, you know, what we brought forward. And that is state law. So you may go, you know what, this is, is too long for us. And again, that's fine, which is why I wanted to raise other programs that may be other options to consider.
Right, I just struggled with the 20 years.
Yep, and you know, you could, let's just say the current program goes away. I mean, you can reconsider this program at any time if you decide to vote to not, you know, if there is, the second reading doesn't, isn't successful. So that, that's fine.
All right, thank you. Any other direction you want to give?
No direction, but I was able to find on the Greater Albany site, a dollar twenty-six per square foot on residential construction.
Still?
That might be outdated.
Entirely possible, but people kept asking like, based on what unit? It's, it's, it's per square foot.
Yeah.
And then the document that I found says 63 cents per square foot on non-residential construction. So it's a lower rate for non-residential for the school district.
Yeah, and the CET rates would be based on the value of the improvement. So it's not square footage, but it's, I mean, there's a formula actually that I think probably factors in the square footage for what that value, how that value is determined. Okay, thank you.
So we're going to be taking a 10-minute break, biology break. We'll be back at 5:31. Be back in 10 minutes, please.
I will now reconvene the meeting at 5:41. Next on tonight's agenda, item five, Albany Municipal Code Amendments, System Development Charges, Charge Deferrals. Matthew Rutgers, Director Rutgers, pages 81 through 105 of your packet, 103, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as the mayor indicated, I'm Matthew Rutgers with the Community Development Department. So I'm here tonight to talk about some municipal code changes. That'll be coming back on this Wednesday to talk about. And it's surrounding SDCs and the deferral of those. One of the recommendations coming out of the Housing Affordability Task Force and ultimately our Housing Implementation Plan, similar to what Ann was discussing, was an option to potentially defer the collection of system development charges. So right now, system development charges, it's a public works fee for all of our utilities, including transportation. They're collected at the time of issuance of the permit. So what the SDC deferral would do would delay that collection point from issuance of permit to just prior to occupancy of the structure. The thought process there being SDCs can be a fairly hefty charge that contractors, developers are, are outlaying at the very front of the project before there's impacts to the systems, which is what SDCs are for, and some portion of reimbursement. And delaying that until just prior to occupancy. There, there are several jurisdictions in Oregon, and not all of them, that do offer SDC deferral. My, formerly I used to work in the city of Springfield. They had SDC deferral there, worked pretty well. So what the ordinance will do, that you guys will hear on Wednesday, is basically put in a section in our municipal code to allow for SDC deferral. And that's, that's not on all of them. It's for residential only. So just pure residential projects, mixed use, commercial, it wouldn't apply there. So if you have, you know, commercial lower floor residential above, that would not apply. We're just kind of easing into the, the deferral process here. Doesn't mean it can't be changed down the road. By cutting it into its own section in the municipal code, makes it pretty easy. If, if it's working well and we want to keep it or expand on it, we have that ability. Or if we say this isn't working for us, we can pull it out pretty easily. It's, we didn't kind of put it into a bunch of different places. It's got its own section. Now with that, when we defer, if a developer opts to defer, they fill out an application to do so. And like I said, they don't have to. They can still just go about the normal process, pay their SDCs at the time of issuance of the permit. But if they choose to, they would fill out the application and pay an application fee. As well as any of the deferred SDCs come with a 2% recovery cost as we look to recoup any of the staff time associated with basically tracking the deferrals. So we, we thought about how do So we we thought about how do we, how do we recoup that cost for additional staff time in in tracking the deferral process? The, one of the big and key elements that is not only in the municipal code, but also in that application, which is also an agreement, is an acknowledgement that the, or the certificate of occupancy will not be issued until those SDCs are paid. And that is, that is key, I know that's one of the fears that as we're working through this process of what it could look like, that you get somebody that's basically completed construction of their project and doesn't have the money to pay the SDC, and then is asking like, hey, can I, can you cut me a break here? That we're very, very clear, when they sign the agreement, they're acknowledging that yes, we will, we actually are taking it a little bit step further in that we won't even let them schedule their, the way it's designed here, is they wouldn't even be able to schedule their final inspection before payment of that SDC, so we're wanting to make sure that the fee is collected. With that, on Wednesday, you'll have not only the the ordinance for adding the SDC deferral, if that's what council elects to do, but also a rate resolution that would establish that two percent recovery fee and a hundred and fifty dollar application fee. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have.
I'm speaking for myself, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great idea, I think it's gonna incentivize people to build, the tiered SDCs, the deferral ability will have them have cash on hand so they can build, and then as long as they can pay them before they take occupancy, that'd be great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is item six, Valiscore Economic Development Sewer and Water Grants Award. Sophie Adams, pages one oh-four and one oh-seven through one oh-seven in your packet.
Good evening. For those watching, I'm Sophie Adams, I manage economic development here. The item in front of you, again, this is information only tonight, is a request to award up to five hundred thousand dollars from the sewer and water economic development funds on a reimbursement basis to offset the costs of related infrastructure necessary to locate a company on this vacant piece of land that you'll see in your packet on Ferry Street. The sewer and water economic development funds might be somewhat new to most of you, they were first created in two thousand and three, and they live within the public works budget. Their purpose is to assist with sewer and water-related expenses for projects that spur economic development, create jobs, and include substantial infrastructure costs. So these funds can't be used for general economic development or small business grants, although we will be talking about that in the next few months. So when we're evaluating potential projects for these grant funds, we look at the current use of the property in question, again, there's a picture, and if you happen to have time to drive by, you'll see the current image of the site there. So is the project going to curb light? Is it gonna reinvigorate a vacant and underused piece of land? We look at the amount of private investment into our community and the number and types of jobs that will be created. The funds have been used pretty sporadically, but as I noted in the memo, since two thousand and twenty-two, these grants have leveraged over eleven million dollars in private investment and brought roughly thirty-three jobs, just for comparison, this proposal would more than double those results with just this one project. So getting to the project, as you read in the memo, Valiscore is an innovative company out of Carvalis that manufactures chemicals for a wide range of applications, including medications, and particularly in this case, the growing semiconductor industry. The first phase of their project, project includes things like site prep, the infrastructure that's key to this grant, and their first manufacturing facility, along with other site improvements. They'll create approximately forty new living wage jobs to Albany, and future phases will mean more jobs, substantially more, somewhere potentially in the ballpark of a hundred and fifty. One interesting thing about this project that's not necessarily pointed out in the memo is that they're also going to carve out two new one-acre parcels of land that can be used for job-creating projects for other companies, and that's thanks to the infrastructure work that they're doing on the site now. There's a breakdown of the estimates for both the construction costs and the public benefits. On the second page of my memo, the total investment into Albany will likely, in the first phase, will likely be around fourteen to fifteen million, aside from the jobs that I already mentioned. The tax revenue just from phase one, coming to just the city only, is estimated at about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars annually. So this action, you'll see in the memo, meets the strategic plan goals for a healthy economy, as well as the criteria for the specific grant program that I addressed earlier, and it has been reviewed and recommended by the Economic Development Advisory Commission as well. Like I mentioned at the beginning, funds are provided on a reimbursement basis, so we're assured that the work is going to be completed before we contribute. There are sufficient funds budgeted for this program in our newly adopted budget, that's also outlined in the memo, and there's no other impacts to costs or staffing here at the city. So like I say, tonight is information only, we'll be back on Wednesday, but happy to take any questions. The Valiscore team is also here tonight if you have any specific questions for them. Thank you.
Council?
I was just curious about who received the previous economic development grants. I believe it was back in two thousand and nineteen that Van Vliet got about two hundred and twenty, right?
Stack hip as well.
Yeah, who was the, what was that?
Stack hip.
Stack hip?
Those, sorry if you don't mind, those funds were from a separate, not the same program.
Okay, who received, I was just, I was just curious, just information only.
Yeah, the last two recipients were the Taquina Hub Manufacturing Project, also located on Ferry Street, that provides multiple suites for light industrial manufacturing tech companies, specifically targeting those that are kind of spinning out of OSU and Carvalis. And the other prop, project was CoreQuest Automation, and they're located right across from Waverly Lake.
Okay, cool, I just couldn't recall.
Yep.
Well, Council, any direction? Just bring it back, Wednesday?
Okay, thank you very much.
Next on tonight's agenda, it's adjustments to the Low Income Assistance Program, Deputy Director, excuse me, Deputy City Manager Caleb Barber Parata.
Get the slideshow going here.
Not in slideshow mode.
I'm moving it into it.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, good evening, Council, glad to be back in front of you after a wonderful break. So tonight, I'm hoping that we can close the loop on what has been a couple-month conversation around the Low Income Assistance Program and some recommended changes that we hope meet a number of the goals that you have outlined. So tonight, before I get into some of the changes, I thought I would just do a quick reminder in regards to the current program structure. So this should be a very familiar slide for you, you saw it in each of the budget presentations, but the current program applies to anyone who makes sixty percent or less of the state median income, and provides assistance for four months of water use, or, excuse me, four units of water usage and fifty percent off the city services fee. In two thousand and twenty-four, that is the last completed year, it covered two hundred and eighty-six households and had about seventy-one thousand dollars in assistance. I did have our staff go ahead and poll our current numbers, so as of the July poll, we are sitting at about a hundred and fifty-three households that are utilizing that program right now, which I will say is lower than we are typically this time of year, we're usually at about two hundred, but as part of our analysis and looking into this, we did find that to be similar across all of our assistance programs. So for example, we also offer the payment plan, that is also down year-to-date for this year, but we have not seen any change in the number of households that are being shut off, and we are still maintaining that same average. So I just want to give you kind of that context as we are looking at the program. So, looking at the goals, what you're gonna see here is, you'll remember back in June, we did come before Council and really have you guys walk through a number of your high-level goals in regards to the program and what you'd like to see moving forward, and you can see some of those listed here, particularly that humanized the process, really trying to make it open and make people feel like they could come and ask for that assistance, ultimately trying to address that overall bill burden for residents, and then really making it a more streamlined, easy-to-access program, really removing those barriers. And then finally, wanting to get some regular report-outs in regards to the performance of that program. You'll see on the other side, as we went back and looked at how we might operate and implement some of the recommendations I'm going to talk about in a moment, staff did include two additional operational goals, one being that we wanted to make sure it was a sustainable operations, that the items that you're about to hear are all very significant lifts for staff to put in place. There are also items that people come and will rely on, so we want to make sure we're not just creating something that can be a one-time item, but something that we can sustain now and into the future. And then as we got into this, we really found that while the focus right now is in regards to the city services fee portion of the conversation, you cannot look at that in isolation, at the end of the day, it's the same application process that people are going through, so we really looked for opportunities to tee the city up for a utility assistance conversation as well. So over the next few slides, I'm gonna go through a number of changes, excuse me, first I'll do a review. So since we met last, just want to give you just an update on kind of the work that's been happening behind the scenes. So since we had that meeting with you where you discussed your goals, staff has met several times, both internally and with external partners, really to try and better understand what our options are there, what implementation looks like, and what we think expected impacts would be. So we've brainstormed a number of options, went through those evaluations, and we also sat down extensively with Community Services Consortium, given they are current partners in the administration of the program. And then we also spoke with other cities, I'll get a little bit into that as we move into some of the recommendations, really trying to understand how their programs operate, and what are the opportunities and challenges that they saw in those formats. So now, I will get into a number of recommendations, I'm going to go through these one by one, they act in phases, I will have a summary slide at the end, because it can get a little bit complicated as we move through this. Okay, so let's start with the easiest piece, the awareness and reporting, that's kind of the low-hanging fruit item that came out of that goals discussion. So as you can see here, we have a number of items that we're looking at in terms of community awareness and reporting, if they have a checkmark next to them, that is because we have already started implementing those. So first and foremost was getting a presence out at events. So if you have been to any of the Fun in the Park events in the last couple of weeks, you will note that both Kenzie and Matt have been out with the new updated flyer for the Low Income Assistance Program, really being able to put that human face and have that conversation with people. That gets back to that human connection, right? We talked about humanizing the process, sometimes just having that face-to-face interaction is the best way to do that. We have also reached out to the school district to begin conversations about how we can push this information out through their platforms, we are still working through with them on exactly what that will look like, but those conversations are underway. We've also started pulling together information for an online one-stop-shop for our own programs. So as we were going through reviewing opportunities, we realized we're offering a number of programs throughout the city, whether it's discounts for low-income residents for recreation programs, things that we do with the court, et cetera, but they all live in very different places, so adopting that mentality that we enjoyed from CSC, we're collating that into an online one-stop-shop that we will be able to direct residents to for each of our programs. We're also going to be rolling out a Share Your Story campaign, seeking input from individuals who have, and this is completely voluntary, who have received assistance in the past and are willing to share their stories, keeping it anonymous, of course, again, trying to humanize that aspect for people. And then finally, we have reworked our shut-off notice letter to make sure that every single person who is getting that notice does receive information yet again regarding the program. If they're at this point, we've probably talked to them about it a few times, but we're putting it in writing, kind of on that final notice there. And then finally, on the reporting side, we are looking at pulling in that program performance data into that quarterly financial report that we're gonna be giving you, that way you can see the number of households that have received assistance, as well as those impacts financially. So moving into this first piece, now I talked a little bit earlier about, as we really got into this, we realized that while the focus in the immediate timeframe is going to be on the city services fee portion of this assistance, it could not be looked at in isolation, and really, that's, that's due to the fact that the largest part of the bill is that utility piece, right? So there's only so much we can do as far as addressing monthly bill burden, looking at that city services fee alone. So as part of this conversation, we looked for, where do we want to go next, and where is the biggest bang for our buck as we move into two thousand and twenty-six? So two of the things that we are looking at and proposing to Council to direct us to move forward on is first, the development of a low-income emergency shut-off assistance program. So this is for those people who really fall behind, they're still not able to get caught up through those payment assistance programs, and they are at risk of shut-off. We would like to spend the next couple of months working on the details of what that program would look like, we've already begun talking to some other groups that do this, with the idea of implementing that in January of two thousand and twenty-six. I wish we could do it sooner, but that isn't a significantly heavy lift to do a program like that. And then you can see underneath that, and the expectation is that we would offset that through credit card fee recovery, and so right now, we don't charge a credit card fee on our developers who are coming in for our SDCs and other things at the counter, so we would expect to recover that through that fee. The second item related to utility assistance is that we would be looking at in July of two thousand and twenty-six, implementation of sewer and storm assistance programs. We would come back to you in the spring of two thousand and twenty-six to work through those programs, and then alongside that, talk through an adjustment to that thirty-five cent fee that you see on your bill to support those low-income assistance programs. And we're really looking at the fee on this side, because we do need to make sure that those programs are acting as an enterprise, and they do have to make themselves whole. So moving forward, this is a significant change in a lot of, we really bent over backwards to figure out how to do this next one. So we heard a lot about wanting to make the process easier and make there more options for people to access our program. So we are proposing a transition to what is called categorical eligibility. And what that is, is we would be looking at, starting with two thousand and twenty-six credits, that people would be eligible if they can show that they have, are qualified for SNAP, so they they receive a letter that they can provide us. Same thing for Oregon Health Plan, which is our Medicaid equivalent here in the state of Oregon, and then finally, if they've been receiving it through the CSC utility assistance, we did not want to take away that eligibility, so that would be the third option for them to qualify. So there are now three different platforms through which they can qualify, and the expectation is that will expand the pool of eligible households. And I will say, for this particular presentation, we got a lot of varied numbers from other communities on how much we could expect that to change, so as I move forward and talk through some of the other items and what those budgetary impacts look like, we are right now estimating a doubling of the number of households that receive assistance, really trying to make sure that we can provide that coverage, but we would know more once we have a couple months under our belt. So a couple things on the implementation side, becomes a much easier implementation as well. We would transition to a short application, probably no more than one page, it would be a couple of identifying questions around their account, and then they would attach their approval letter from one of those entities. Now, the next piece, and this is one that we spent a lot of time on, is there may be a need for us to transition administration in-house. So when we originally sat down, and we did have several meetings with Community Services Consortium, and then the initial reaction to a switch over to categorical eligibility was that they would not be able to provide that service for us. I will say, they did come to us late last week, and did note that they want to go back, take a look, and see if maybe they can make this work out after all. That being said, we did go through the full analysis of figuring out what it would take to bring this in-house, spoke extensively with other cities who already do this in-house to figure out what that lift would be, so if ultimately CSC is not able to provide that service, we are fully expecting that, we would be able to set that up. And so this, as I said before, would be effective on two thousand and twenty-six credits onward, that is because we already have people underway in the two thousand and twenty-five program, but people would start seeing that application roll out October two thousand and twenty-five. So the next piece here is the city services fee assistance. There was a lot of concern in those meetings around really the sudden impact to our low-income users, given that the city services fee did such a significant catch-up this year. So what we are proposing here is effective October two thousand and twenty-five, so that's the same time that the city services fee increase goes into effect, we would increase the credit from fifty percent to seventy percent. What that does is it puts our residents back at that four fifty, and then allows that to move What that does is it puts our residents back at that 450 and then allows that to move very slowly with that inflationary increase year over year, so it's not a sudden shocking impact to our lowest-income residents. What does that look like in terms of implementation? So for this initial piece, we're looking at a one-time hit to reserves of, excuse me, 56,000. And that's because obviously that was not incorporated into the budget when we were pulling it through. And again, that is based on that assumption of doubling the number of applicants because we would also be looking at that categorical eligibility going into effect very shortly after this. Long-term, we would look at addressing this through that same fee update, so that 35 cents that's currently structured just for the water fund portion of this. We do not currently recoup anything for the city services fee side of it. So when we go to touch that as part of that utility fee conversation, we would also address the city services fee portion of this at that time, really making sure that we have a sustainable funding source moving forward. So as promised, if it updates, there we go. A lot of different items that were proposed there that we're recommending. So I wanted to pull this together into just a nice matrix that can kind of show you the different items, the timeframe, the phasing you can see there, and then down the side, you can also see each of the goal areas that we were trying to address. So with that, what we're really looking for tonight, we scheduled this in case you needed some discussion around this, but if council feels pretty good about this proposal moving forward, the sooner we can get direction, the better, because there's actually quite a lot of work that needs to go into implementation for this, for that October date.
Love it. Thanks. This is awesome.
Yeah, I'm truly pleased to see that my recommendation to increase the discount on the city services fee for low-income residents is being put into action. It's a meaningful step towards making our city more equitable and ensuring that essential services remain accessible to those who need it most, because affordability does matter, and this change reflects our commitment to supporting all members of the community, especially those facing these hardships. So thank you for that.
You're the counselors? I think it's great work.
Just nothing particular, just I agree. I echo, thank you. This is, this is great, and I look forward to talking about the LI AP fee next year and how we can maybe use that to help offset the service fee.
Thank you. Thank you, Kayla. Please thank the team for doing this. Great work. I think it's a great step, and I like the way you laid it out here for us to understand. And that's hoping to help us also with communicating with our constituents. So thank you very much. Staff, well done.
I love a good matrix. Thanks for putting it all in.
Yes.
Yes, we love them.
You won us over with a matrix.
The lift it was to try to keep all of this straight was insane even for our staff, so it helped us as well.
So I'm going to switch, are you, were you done?
I'm absolutely, yep.
Okay. So I'm going to switch this up. We're going to move to an executive session, and we're going to do business from the council, city manager report, and after that. Okay. So we'll now recess to executive session. The city council will now meet in the executive session to consult with council concerning illegal rights and duties of the public body with regard to a current legislation, litigation, or litigation likely to be filed in accordance with ORS 192.660 subsection H, subsection, uh, 2 subsection H. Representatives of the news media and designated staff and other persons shall be allowed to attend their executive session. All other participants must exit. Online audience members will now be moved to a waiting room. When the council returns to open session, the staff will readmit those remaining in the waiting room to rejoin the meeting. In-person audience members must leave the council chambers and wait in the hallway. When the council returns to open session, the staff will open the doors, and you can rejoin the meeting. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions will be made in executive sessions. I now recess to executive session at 6:08.
Next on tonight's, thank you very much, Mr. Montoya.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council, and I will start, we're going to start that, it's been a month long. I'll start with Councilor Smith and then over here.
Um, I don't have much to contribute. I kept a list of all the city business that I was involved in in the four weeks that we were not doing city business, but that's not really relevant. The important thing is that by the end of the four weeks, I was uncertain from day to day what day of the week it was. So I'd like to call that a good vacation. Glad to be back.
Councilor McLeod?
Thank you. I was very busy during the break. I, I would like to go, go through the, the city business that I did during the summer, summer council meeting break. I participated in numerous community events engaging with residents throughout our city and beyond. I attended three more Fun in the Park events at Doug Killen Friendship Park, Gibson Hill Park, and Meadow Ridge Park. Shout out to the Parks and Recs Department for putting those events together. Thank you, and to the city staff for the public engagement that occurred on those days. National Night Out was a great success. APD Officer Trust and I attended three gatherings where we engaged with community members, reported on crime statistics in their neighborhoods, and listened to their concerns about our community. Benton County Commissioner Gabe Shepherd held a town hall in North Albany that I attended where he addressed concerns from residents regarding road improvements and traffic flow through North Albany. I also embarked on a tour of the Albany Transit System, System with Public Works Director Chris Bailey. We rode both the A and B lines through town, and she furnished me with a detailed explanation of the system's fearless operational framework. It was great to see our public transit system in action and see for myself that it is a safe and reliable way to get around town. My daughter is looking forward to future rides that we have planned together on the city buses. I also volunteered this past weekend for the Oregon Senior Games. We heard from them before the break about, about these games. The Oregon Senior Games is an annual Olympic-style competition for athletes age 50 and over. Participants can qualify for the National Senior Games, and I wanted to let everyone know that the games continue through next weekend in Corvallis and here in Albany, and everyone is encouraged to come out and cheer them on. Also, I met with the Office of Congresswoman Janelle Bynum, where we discussed ways to collaborate on shared goals and objectives between what happens in the city of Albany and the work that she does in Washington, DC. I had a couple of constituent contacts. I was contacted by a resident over, over the weekend about the sidewalk project on Geary Street. There was a delay between the demolition and the pouring of the new concrete. I visited that property today and spoke with the resident. The concrete has now been poured, and there are no further issues there. I've also had continued communication about activities of unhoused individuals on periwinkle bike path. I've been working in concert with the city manager's office and the Albany Police Department, and we will have a response for that individual as soon as we have all of the relevant data from APD. That being said, I, I will wait until Wednesday to share what I have coming up, and that's about it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Van Gerblin?
Uh, no new business tonight, other than just during the break, I've been fielding feedback from constituents and making sure that the relevant city departments get that. A lot of the same issues that Carolyn and I have been keeping each other apprised of things in Ward Two and things that we hear about. So, Peter, I've been filling up your inbox a little bit.
Good. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, thank you. It was a great break. Some of the things I did, and the first one, Albany Pride really has become kind of a highlight event of the summer. Had a great time there. And that same day went on the, the annual Summer Home Tour of Historic Homes, which benefits the Montis House. And that, that too is always a great event. Saw a lot of folks showing our historic homes on, um, I was, I volunteered as part of the History Through the Headstones program at Riverside Cemetery and, which benefited the, or was put on by the Riverside Cemetery and the Albany Regional Museum. Just fascinating, just fascinating, the, the lives people led and the, you know, we, we know the Montis and the Hacklemans, but there are just so many folks who helped kind of create the, the city we know today. And then, then Friday is at the Craft Brew Event put on by Rotary in the Albany Downtown. And that's another, been, I don't know how many years they've been doing it, seems like nine or 10 now, but, um, that's another fun event. So I just participate in all the fun events around town. Not all of them, I missed a few. That's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Newton?
I, I also helped out some constituents with issues, but probably my most favorite is we successfully tent camped with a four-year-old for the first time.
Oh.
And it was wonderful. So I was very nervous, but we went camping, we went to the beach. Great restful break. I agree with Counselor Smith that there were some days where I was like, what day is it? But I think that's a great sign of a wonderful summer vacation and got lots of reading in and excited to get back to work.
Fantastic. For, that's it?
Mm-hmm.
The biggest thing to have, I'm gonna say it again Wednesday night, my grand, my grandson was born three weeks ago, two and a half weeks ago on Saturday. Maverick John Robert Johnson was eight pounds, 12 ounces, 22 inches long, big cheeks, all ten fingers and, excuse me, ten fingers, ten toes, and he's got a great smile, so. And I'll show, I have other stuff to share, but I'll do that Wednesday night. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager for his time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just three things for you this evening. The League of Oregon Cities 100th Annual Conference is coming up, and every year that we have the conference, the, the league asks us for who our voting delegate will be, and normally that's the mayor, unless the mayor's not going to attend. But I wanted to get the council's confirmation on who they wanted to represent this year at, at the conference.
I'll nominate, uh-
Are you?
Ms. Newton, Counselor Newton.
Okay.
Sure.
Will you be there?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be there. October, second to fourth?
That's October 4th is when the-
Yes.
-business meeting is.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay. All right, so I don't think, I mean, I don't think you need a vote, but if that's okay with everybody here, well, I'll provide that name to the League of Oregon Cities.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Matthew Rutgers did, per the council's direction, approach the Van Vliet Meat Company, and they're unwilling to offer the 145,000 that the council was interested in. And that leaves a couple of options. One is the council can elect to put it up for sale on the open market, or just leave it at the status quo for now, and there's no need to make any decision at this point. And then lastly, I wanted to let you know that the Mennonite Village has, has approached us, and they're interested in reactivating what some might remember the Hospital Financing Authority, HFA, which would allow them to arrange financing for their expansion through the issuance of bonds. And we'll be getting more information to you on that. That's a, a developing issue that we just met with them last week, so you'll hear more from us. And that is all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting, and I will see you all Wednesday night at 6:00 PM, August 13th, here in Chambers.